In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12, 2020, the town and city of public meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded. It will be posted following the meeting. Public comment will be available via Zoom. Please note we all The Thursday, August 10, 2020, school committee meeting to order. Brandalini?
Yes.
Gates? Yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Limblam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
All right, we're now in public session. Now entertain a motion to enter into executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategy sessions with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hayes or second?
Second.
Second by Long. Limblam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Gates? Yes. Brandalini?
Yes.
All right, and we will enter back into public session at the conclusion. In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12, 2020, town and city of public meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded and posted following the meeting. Public comment will be available by Zoom. Please note the chat functionality has been turned off has been turned off for this particular meeting. Community members can also email myself, pigates@cit.org with questions. For further clarification, we just returned from executive session. I'd like to call the meeting back to order at 6:03 via roll call. Brandalini?
Yes.
Gates? Yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Limblam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
All right, we're back to order. Welcome, everybody. Looks like we have 280 participants. If you're following along at home, the agenda, we've completed and returned to public session. We're on item, agenda number three, the acceptance of minutes. A discussion and/or motion to approve the June 15, 2020 minutes.
I have no comments, so I'll move to approve as presented.
Motion by Hayes?
Second.
Second by Brandalini. I'll go first. Gates? Yes. Brandalini?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Limblam?
Yes.
All right, the minutes passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda. Under all business. What happened here? Everyone should be muted.
I got her. I got her.
Okay. All right, under all business, to the topic at hand, situat safe and strong reopening, final plan. This will be discussion and vote. I also wanted to make a note on the agenda. We will allow for a public comment, statements and questions prior to our vote. Again, the chat functionality is turned off. When we approach that section, I'll review the process. And if you have a question or comment, you may do so. I'll review that process when we get there. But again, just a reminder, we will allow for public comment before we make our final vote. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So, welcome, everybody, and good evening. I'd like to start off the presentation tonight with a, an email I shared with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents yesterday. And I did so to because it's how I felt, and it's also basically a way to try to rally the troops of superintendents and be a little more proactive and stand up for what we believe in after talking with several of them. So I wanted to share this with our community here. And this is a version of that email yesterday. "I'm here in my office on a Sunday, again, away from my family, responding personally to 500-plus emails and correspondence sent to me and CC to our school committee on people's opinions on our recent reopening plans. I'm not complaining about working on a Sunday or every Sunday. Many of us do that. My point of this email is to share with you my frustration that I believe we are working harder, not smarter. Responses to our plans, insert XYZ, it doesn't really matter, have been, if you don't bring back kids, those depressed make them commit suicide, and you are responsible. And if you bring back our teachers and one dies, well, that's on you too. So either way, I'm a murderer. Lawyers respond to the question of, are superintendents or school committees liable if someone gets sick or dies? With, quote, "as long as you are not negligent." Will Governor Baker's name be on the right side of the V? Meaning defendant, when we are sued? You can answer that one yourself. My former resource officer, Beck and Howard, used to call it plausible deniability. My wife prepared me for this and accepted the position of superintendent. She would often tell me, you're going to need even thicker skin soon. But I don't think that's the problem. Again, oftentimes, I don't disagree with the arguments being made by our stakeholders here in situ. Which brings me to my point. Our inability to have a statewide prescriptive plan laid out by our governor and supported by our commissioner has put us all in a lose-lose situation. On August 7, our governor came out and reduced public gathering sizes, something about bars trying to masquerade as popcorn vendors and finding loopholes. The point here is the governor's team of experts have developed a very thorough and sound phased-in state reopening plan. In fact, it is working. Why hasn't it been done for education? The governor has regular press conferences sharing COVID-19 data in science. Because it's about the science and the data, right? Well, why hasn't the governor shared his statewide school entry data in science and metric for reopening or closing like he has for the current state plan? Why is it left up to individual boards of health? Where is our state plan by the governor that determines if teachers are essential workers? Why are we not pushing him to answer that simple question? I read in the link to the article on the governor's presser on August 7, "Safety Standards and Checklists," colon, "Restaurants", and thought, wow, wouldn't it be great if the governor's team had such a detailed and well-thought-out plan for our schools? Are they not as important? We have three weeks before teachers show up to our schools, and the governor's frequent televised press conferences are absent the commissioner of education. Wouldn't it be a good time for the governor to have weekly, if not daily, updates on his vision for education alongside the commissioner? To put us all at ease and to unify us around one message? It's not too late for us to push back and start holding our governor and leadership accountable. My plea is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, in unison with our members, get back on their horse and hold the governor accountable. Make him, like us, answer the tough questions. Where is your plan for schools? Are teachers essential? What are your policies to support your philosophy that we should reopen schools? Why aren't you and the commissioner meeting daily and publicly supporting your superintendents? What is your scientific metric for when we should open or close schools? I feel, I feel we, superintendents, along with our school committee members, have been thrown into shark-infested waters with each declaration by the governor that restricts advancement of the phases or contradicts his directive to open schools akin to throwing chum in the water. Where is his accountability? Ben Franklin once said, "We must indeed all hang together, or most assuredly we shall all hang separately." The MTA has surely heeded Dr. Franklin's advice. Shouldn't we? It's not too late. A lack of prescriptive statewide governor-backed phased-in school reopening plans has allowed our towns to reflect our nation, creating division between parents, staff, administrators, school and community members. It's time we change that. So I share that with you in full disclosure that that's how I feel. And I also share with you, in an effort to unify us all, no matter what our beliefs, and also to let you know that I have full confidence that if we don't, likely at this point won't receive this direction that I seek, we will all do what's best for children. I want to thank all the dedicated and hardworking staff that have put together our plan, the hundreds of hours of sacrifice, missed vacation time and the time away from family to put this plan together in a short amount of time. I'd like to thank our school committee members who didn't sign up for this. I'd also like to thank our teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers and support staff who are anxiously awaiting what will happen next. So I'll end with that and move into my summary of the document.
Well said, Bill. Well said.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bill.
I guess that's, that's my message to all of you out there, that, yes, this is my plan. It's got my name on it. We're all in a tough situation. Let's kind of stick together. And I've talked about this. This too will get through, but I think the relationships we build now and working together to do what's best for our children and protecting our adults in the buildings will last us through the next decade and beyond. So I just wanted to maintain that respect and be able to disagree, but to do so respectfully and know that everybody here has had a lot of sleepless nights. Okay, so as far as the plan, again, feedback was overwhelming. Awesome. I really appreciate the passionate teachers, paraprofessionals, educators, community members and families that responded. And I know our inbox were flooded, and I fully expected that, and that's what I respect so much about our great town. We did take something from that. The committee members took back, I'm assuming, a sense of where the town stands. And we, as educators, right away, Friday morning, I was taking the incoming emails, taking notes. I know our principals and central office team was doing the same. We prided ourselves on transparency, inclusiveness, and some trends started popping up. Now, some of the questions that came in, we, we took and will be part of our more prescriptive plan as we move through this. But some major trends that I wanted to address tonight that will impact a lot of people, and I felt we needed to address in our plan. So the blue model, the remote model that we have currently in the plan is a ingenuity was the, was the was the, was the document we talked about, the DESI Learning Management System or platform. I think it came across in our last meeting, to people, to parents, that if they chose the fully remote plan, the blue plan, that their child would be stuck with ingenuity and no contact with educators. And I apologize for that. We had a district leadership meeting this morning, and that was one of our priority topics, because we agree the plan as I presented it wasn't what we aspire to, which is connecting our great teachers and paraprofessionals and educators with our students directly. So it flew in the face of that key component of what we believe in. So we are reconfiguring that. Obviously, and I wanted to just make a commitment to all of you that that part of the plan, no student will be isolated. No student will be thrown on an ingenuity platform and not paid attention to. In fact, I think just the brainstorming we've had with our elementary principals, we can get rid of that platform altogether for the remote learning at the elementary level and just use it as a support system at the upper grades, because it is good for some kids. Okay, so I think we've made a lot of progress on that. I just wanted to reassure people that we heard you loud and clear that that management system alone is not what you'll be getting. Okay, so it will be a more comprehensive, interactive, and I think the idea of including kids with their cohorts is very important, the social, emotional learning part of that. So we have some ideas along with that. And I want to thank our teachers, because several teachers emailed me today with some solutions to that problem and some great ideas. So I wanted to thank you. I also wanted you to know, and the folks out there in public watching tonight know that, by voting on tonight's plan, the school committee is voting on the framework of our plan. Okay, so that we can get to work in filling in the details, answering all these questions, having building-based meetings and making things the best they can be for our kids. We've got the time to do that. Okay, they're not voting on the very specifics of every detail. That still has to be done. Okay, and the school committee reserves the right to reassess and revise the plan as well. We're voting on this because it's, I believe, a solid foundation to begin our work. And keep in mind, there's three, is actually four, but three phases of the plan. There's an all-in-school safely yellow plan, there's an orange plan, the hybrid plan, and there's the red plan, fully remote, also the blue plan, which kind of connects with the hybrid philosophy. Okay, so you're voting that entire plan. Well, I think we've done a real good job of us. We can smoothly transition from those plans. And part of my recommendation tonight to put people at ease is, we don't know in COVID what's happening day-to-day as far as the numbers go. It's tough to keep, and they change. I would recommend that we approve the plan based on the plan and let us get to work, but maybe not commit to which part of the plan goes first, although if the numbers were to stay until we have a state metric or a metric we agree upon, which we don't have right now, that would tie directly into the number of cases that we have and use science and data to determine how we start school. Our next meeting is August 27. I think we'd have time before then. I believe the state's coming up with that metric. And I know that you, that the school committee here would like to see that, to either use that metric or develop their own more stringent document as well. So I think putting the school committee in a situation where they have to vote on a timeline of what's going to happen six weeks from now or five weeks from now wouldn't be fair. So I'm asking you to consider the plan, which I think is solid. I think has received a lot of positive feedback, knowing that also the plan is flexible and will change. Meaning not wholeheartedly, meaning that we have to sit with our teachers and our parents at the local level and start working out these details, how we practically can implement this plan. And we don't have a ton of time to do that. So I wanted to share that about the blue phase and reassure parents that your child will not be left alone on a platform, that there will be connection with the cohort, there will be teacher regular involvement, and we will make sure that we own up to our responsibility to quality instruction for our child. Next, I wanted to summarize the next step following the committee's vote tonight. Should it be a positive and the affirmative? We pass this into DESI. Obviously, they would review it, give feedback. Again, but it's the committee's purview, not the commissioner's, according to his own words. The next step that we have, we were very well prepared to move forward and get our teachers involved and our families involved in the school-based specific questions that you may have. For example, our principals are all running family forums. We know that was a big success. It was very helpful to me when I held them for the district. Now the principal is going to hold them. I think it will be more powerful at this point for parents to ask specific questions about their children's specific schools. And we'll make sure we stagger those, so that if you have multiple children in multiple schools, you can ask, join all those meetings. Also, we have voluntary groups of teachers already being asked by their principals to come together and come up with great solutions and plans for each of our, each of our plans within a plan. So kind of put the meat on the bone, if you will, of all these plans. Right, we, I've said this many times, we've got great educators here. They want to help. They want to be in school. They want to be with kids. They want to help with this plan. They want a voice. So certainly, this is a great opportunity for our teachers to volunteer to be part of that process. So that also will begin this week. So I'm happy to report that. And then next week, we start our annual retreat with our district leadership principals and department chairs and coordinators. That'll be three full days of working on this plan and some other focus points of our year starting out. So again, we've got our teachers working. Now we've got our department heads and central office team working together, taking that information that we got from our staff and our teachers and making this plan really strong in all three phases. And local collaboration with neighboring superintendents and principals, and then also local collaboration with our, in negotiation with our collective bargaining units. Okay, so them to be able to weigh in on the plan and to share how they feel about it and add to it. Our weekly communication updates will continue. I think they've been effective, so I want to let people know that. If something pressing comes up or important, certainly that will be a special outreach, and so we have that ability to do that as well. But please expect the Thursday spots to continue to come out, the weekly reports for, on Community Access Cable and updates on the website. And then on the August 27 meeting, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, from all that work that we do in the next two meetings, in the next two weeks, is to have a presentation for the school committee with district and school administration kind of updating you overall where we're at with our plan and specifically at each building. Also providing you a budgetary update on where we stand and a special education update with a new director of special education and a new director of business and finance. So a pretty comprehensive package on the 27th. Hopefully by then we'll have a metric to, to go by. Obviously, a lot more information, as we know, day-to-day things change. So that's kind of my, my summary for this evening. You have the plan. Again, my recommendation would be, you know, to, knowing that the plan is a framework that it can change, that we vote in the affirmative tonight, but that you have the ability to not commit to any plan until you have the actual metric or data to support that. And I think that would be the safe and wise thing to do, put everyone at ease, that we have a plan. Let's unify together to hash out the three phases of that plan. Let's see where we are on August 27. Give the school committee more data, more time, more information. Have a metric for you, and then we can make a decision on moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkett. I'm going to kick off the question-answer with the school committee. I'm going to go reverse alphabetically. So we're going to go Mr. Long.
Thanks, Peter. I just have a couple of quick questions. So assuming we approve this plan tonight and we start hybrid, but we do end up having to go 100% remote, what would the approach be in terms of timeline for that? Would we be looking at, you know, moving back and forth on a weekly basis, a monthly basis? How would the approach be going from one plan to another if we needed to? Or go from remote to hybrid if we needed to?
Yeah, I think that's one of the questions we had for the commissioner in the metric that we need to develop. I think that needs to be put in the metric. Certainly would be superintendent concentration with the school committee's purview as one part of that. But if we have a metric in place, I think that also gives us some guidance on looking at the numbers on a weekly and daily basis on when we make the decision to safely return to school. I think there's some danger in flipping from phase to phase too quickly in speaking with parents that, especially our parents with students with intensive special needs, that bringing them into school, then taking them out, then bringing them back in creates a lot of anxiety for a lot of kids. So I think we have to include that in our metric and do so cautiously. And I also think if we were to say, start with the hybrid and then go remote because the numbers spiked, I think we'd have to build into the metric at least a couple of weeks, two, three weeks or more, that the numbers show below a certain thing, kind of like the state plan has, a phased-in and phased-out approach. So my recommendation was we include that in the metric if the state doesn't, and that we don't do so too rapidly until the numbers show a positive trend either way.
Okay, thank you. And the only other question I have for right now. So after tonight's meeting and we take a vote, what is the timeline for, for parents to select if they want their student to be in school or remote?
I think we're going to talk about that with our leadership team tomorrow. I'll be getting out. We're looking at doing another survey now that the plan, if the plan were to be finalized. Talk about if they're considering taking transportation, if they're planning on coming to school. You know, and I'll give a deadline, probably a couple of weeks to do that. At least to commit to the coming to school or not. Just, just because an important factor right now is, you know, how many teachers that will be able to come back and how many students are planning on coming, so we can do our planning and make sure that all phases are ready to go. So likely within two weeks.
Peter, the fellow I have for right now.
Got it. Ms. Limblam?
Thank you. Bill, thanks for that opening statement, because I think that, that's exactly how I think we all feel. And I, you know, I'm sure school committees across the state feel the same way. And I also want to thank the, those of you who have sent emails to us. I mean, I can't answer them all. Overwhelmed with emails, so I appreciate everybody's input. You know, pros, there was a lot of good suggestions on tweaks that we can make to the plan, so I feel better knowing that we can, we're voting on a framework in order to build on, because I feel like there really are some things that really need to be worked on with the hybrid model before we decide on that. And I think what we need to emphasize too, it seems that a lot of, a lot of the emails reference the poor, bad experience that families had with the spring remote, and I think we need to, you know, really communicate what the difference will be for looking at the fall, because it's not going to be the same. Yes, I guess that's all I have for now. I mean, I have some other statements, but I can wait on that.
You're welcome to provide any statements if you want, Janice.
Can I respond to Chairman Gates?
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Limblam. I just want to let you know that we plan on doing that on the 27th. We'll have more details on all the plans. We've been working hard on those remote plans, and there'll be a clear distinction between what happened in March and what we will be rolling out for the fall.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Pete. And thank you again, Bill, and everyone that's been working on this, whether it's part of the task force or parents or all the, all the input that we've had has been amazing. And I really only have a couple of comments. Number one, I'm in favor of the plan and intend to vote for it. Again, it's an outline as to how we're going to go forward. We still have a lot of work to do, as I said last time. This is step one, and we have a long way to go, and I'm confident that we'll get there. And what I hope, as, as Bill said, you know, there are a couple of important things that we're hoping to get from the state, and if we can't get from the state, we'll have to make up our own minds on. One is the, the metric of the, how we would have to potentially pivot and what is that percentage positive results in situ and the state. And I do think we need to be more conservative than CDC or the state, as I noted that New York City will go all remote if it hits three. I think today I saw we're at 1.17. So I think we're in pretty good shape right now, obviously. And then the other issue I want to see, I'd love to see get resolved is testing. You know, are we going to be in a position to test people, specifically teachers and staff? And it's a shame there's no, it's criminal that there's no federal testing strategy and that everybody's on their own, but to me, that is one way we can protect as many people, especially teachers and staff as possible. So I'll be interested in seeing if there's anything going forward in the next five weeks that, that answers that question.
May I respond to Mr. Hayes?
Please. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Well put. I, I agree with you on the testing. I think that we're, we've been looking at every way to kind of, you know, protect our students and staff. You know, I'm gonna briefly turn this over. He's only been on the job a week, but he's been working on this. If Dr. Dutch could kind of weigh in on where we're at with testing?
Sure, thanks. We, we also think the testing is a key to ensuring everyone's safety and have begun to explore mechanisms to provide that testing in-house. We have, have sourced with the Broad Institute through MIT, discounted testing for our staff. And if we're looking to spend that sort of money, we can do it for students as well, particularly if they're being symptomatic. So we're going to continue to explore cost-effective ways to incorporate testing into our protocols to ensure safety while maintaining everyone's confidentiality.
Do we know how, how much money the Plymouth County Commissioners are holding on to? And what's that, what are their plans?
We, we have a, we have, we know how much Plymouth County has. We have a rough idea of how much money the town of Situate has. The unknown is what they're going to be releasing to, to the school district. And I'm, I'm working, working on that as well, getting that information. And so then I have a hard number.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right, anything else, Mr. Hayes?
I'm done, I'm all set.
All right. Well, because we are instructed by MASH that the chair always has the last question and comments. I'm going to skip over myself and go to Ms. Brandalini.
Thank you, Peter, Chairman Gates. I have a couple of questions. I did put some thoughts into writing. Trying to decide what direction to go first. I think I'll ask my questions first. So Mr. Burkhead, I'm just curious if you at this time have any more detail about how, I guess you're probably working on it by an instant question when you said about the new direction for the blue cohort was, how will the blue cohort connect to teachers and peers? Not sure if you have the details today, but I'm sure that's a question that will be, it already came to our emails, but I'm sure it'll be reiterated, even though I'm sure people will like, especially the elementary piece to this. That's definitely reassuring for families. And my other questions are about metrics and things. To give people even just a broad view of what our metrics could potentially be for shutting down. I know you just mentioned New York, but could we, I mean, is there a way to have that out for the 27th? It feels a little bit late. I know that there's so many pieces, so much work to do. Can we have almost like a mini update prior, just as people try to make decisions for which road to take and which option to do for their children and as staff?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brandalini. Great questions. Yeah, the elementary blue, in fact, I can give you some feedback on that because we did see the majority of the concerns were familiar, the elementary schools. And when I had spoken last week that it worked in the high school and, and my previous district, and it was mostly upper secondary classes and grades. So the elementary school, the principals did a nice job today talking about that every student would be part of a class would be, you know, because the question was, well, what if we go to remote? You know, is my chew, is my child left out of the loop? So they'll be part of that cohort, they'll be part of the, the other part we talked about was the correspondence home. And now that they'll be part of a classroom, the parents get the correspondence from that classroom. They'll be part of any morning meetings or Wednesday check-ins and all that kind of work, I think. What we're trying to do ideally, if there was some type of synchronicity with, with technology that we could include them in the class, that way is the ideal best way. The next best way would be to include, let's say, for example, and we don't know until we get the documentation that we have teachers that are home, for example. If we have a fourth grade teacher home, that teacher could take a cohort. And we were thinking big, out of the picture, and I like this, that even district wide, if there was a fourth grade teacher in the district that was home or two, that teacher could take all the fourth graders and teach them the curriculum, and then they'd still be part of their class for the larger, you know, gatherings and social emotional learning pieces. I thought that was a pretty brilliant idea as opposed to the other option is locally in one of your classes. In one of your schools, for example, if you had a couple of teachers home and maybe they were, you know, they're certified K through six or K through five, but they're a fourth grade teacher, they may take a cohort of kids, first grade, second grade, third grade, work with them, follow the curriculum, those kids would still connect with their teachers, but would have an adult daily checking in on them, working with them. So I thought those were all good ideas. And then we just got a couple of emails, like I said, later with some even better ideas, more specific ideas from teachers. So that's TBD. So I guess the good news is that I'm hoping these just kind of general examples in our first conversations show that we're going to have Situate Public School teachers that the kids are familiar with, working with the students. And the students will be connected to a cohort of their peers for that interaction and connection. And the families will also be connected to their classes through communications. And we'll, we'll, we'll attempt to do the same, obviously, for the middle and high school kids as well. And the, the metric question, yes, we can, we've, we've got a meeting with the commissioner tomorrow. So maybe we'll get some information on that tomorrow. I don't know, but I think that's coming pretty soon. He said the end of last week or beginning of this week, so I'm hoping that might be the information. So if we get that, I'll get that right out to you. If not, we'll be working on our own this week and next and have that before the meeting for you as well. So either way, we'll have something for you.
Okay. And I hope that just, you just reminded me of something, just so people know too. I mean, when we're looking at DESI, tomorrow is the first time that school committee members have an opportunity to meet with Commissioner Riley in this entire process. Tomorrow, the day after the vote. I know it was pushed to the, we got, you know, the 14th extension, but it's a little bit ironic that you wanted to meet with us and have a Zoom after the plans are supposed to be determined, after we, you know, play tug of war with our emotions and our commitment to our students and families. It's just, it's so unfair. So I completely support, as everyone said, what you, your statement that opened the meeting. It's, it's really, it's, it's crazy. I'm, I'm just going to push a little bit that we get more information before 8:27. I know you guys are working beyond overdrive. I just think obviously, and you, you know, this is your philosophy, after all of, you know, more communication, the better. I don't know, Peter, when our next meeting is scheduled for?
We're probably going to look to schedule a meeting next Monday. I would, we'll talk about this at the end. I think it's appropriate.
Right.
To meet weekly.
So I feel, all right, so like the big goal, the 27th, knowing that we'll have kind of these mini updates along the weeks for people. I think that'll be helpful. And when we're looking at metrics, just so people know, because it seems such a broad term, and I know again, we're looking at the zero direction from the state on what that means. I'm going to assume that that means percent positives that maybe if, and I think something for us to think about is, and you know, there's been some little discussions, are we looking at within Situate? I think we have, I don't think we should rely on the state as our, I don't think we should wait for them to make a decision. I think we should make our own plan, excuse me. And hopefully it aligns, maybe ours will be better, maybe they'll end up the same. I just think that we need to do what serves our community, protect our teachers and children the best we can. So the tighter metrics we can come up with that are obviously within, you know, reason to go back, you know, if we're going to use the hybrid plan. So I mean, I, I don't even know what today's for positive. I know Mr. Hayes had said 1.2 about, I've seen 1.8. You know, I think we need to come up with our own very conservative threshold for what happens in our community. And I don't know how we define community, is that Situate, is it South Shore? Is it Massachusetts? Is it, you know, what our region is? So I mean, what if there's a, this is just food for thought of, you know, what if there's a little pop-up like in Cohasset, a scare of some kind? And, but in Situate, we're, you know, keeping straight. I mean, I think we need to come up with all these parameters of, if we see things happening in neighboring towns, do we get ahead of the game and think about pulling back in a color? Or do we hold strong and just pull together? I think we're asking for a big community commitment on this as well. So I think there's lots to think about, but I think it's something we need to get together and settle as soon as we possibly can because, you know, parents want to make decisions on a route and teachers want to. And I think these parameters are important for defining choices. Those were my notes from your presentation. I did write, I guess I can, I mean, I don't need to read my statement. I've pretty much covered everything that I, that is in it. Maybe, I guess it just tells why I would support the framework. Peter, would you rather that be something that comes after the vote for the discussion piece? Or Janice said she has more to say, but maybe in a little bit?
I always have more to say, but I wasn't going to speak specifically about the plan.
So Nicole, I'll answer that by saying I have a com, prepared comments as well. And I was going to read them before I did my question. So whatever you're comfortable with, it's up to you. I'll allow you to speak again.
All right, I'll read it real quick. These are my thoughts. So I support the plan's framework as a means of moving, moving forward and with the understanding that there is much work to be done on both hybrid and remote learning. Without direction, we won't be able to move forward and put meat into the plans. I am one of many who have lost countless nights of sleep mulling over this plan and the enormity of making the wrong decision. I've thought about it with my mom to four SPS children's hat, my mental health hat, my school adjustment counselor hat. And as the daughter of someone with idiopathic pulmonary fibrosis, which is a terminal lung disease with no concrete causes and no known cure, putting my own children in school and simultaneously my going into a school building to work puts additional strain on a relationship for which the hourglass has already been turned over in my family. I know that I am not alone in this, as many of you have reached out and graciously shared your personal struggles with the right and wrong decision here. And while I speak of a grandparent, many SPS parents wrote of cancer survivors and who are survivors themselves, their children, as well as parents who have spent long days working as nurses and medical professionals on COVID units, were urging us to return to the schools under the safest protocols. Parents of children with autoimmune diseases and parents of children with special needs whose services are vital to their health. One parent said it perfectly in so much as, we are not in a risk-first benefit situation. We are literally in a risk, risk situation. The lack of peer engagement for our children is causing harm. Teachers are often the first ones to identify a need in a child, being experienced and having a keen eye to their psychosocial development. For these reasons, I am comfortable letting the data drive this process. With the percent positive rates being 1.8% in mass when I wrote this, we are still very low. That said, the lives of our educators and their families and their mental health matter equally as much. There's anxiety to return to the classroom, either the fear of exposure or the fear of this changed classroom experience. They're being asked to jump into a complete, oh, sorry. They're begging to ju, asked to jump in with complete disregard from state and national levels for their safety. We've been tasked with providing that safety and reassurance. I feel strongly that Superintendent Burkhead and his team of administrators and principals will make sure that these pieces are in place. If we are unable to meet these safety standards, I feel we should not and cannot be inside these buildings. With our own parameters in place, such as six feet apart, masks, solid floor plans for traffic flow, outdoor classrooms, safe spaces, open windows, adequate ventilation, additional PPE, hand sanitizers, looking at schedules for teachers and refining them to expose them to as few cohorts and students as we are able to. I think we really need to look at our middle school and high schools. And there are some brains out there that are like way better than mine that can do something here. And we have to narrow down the amount of students these people see a day. I believe that we really need to look at the cleaning chemicals and take precautions to make sure custodial staff, children, teachers, everybody in the building is protected. It will all be imperative for success. I believe we can also provide a strong remote learning option with love and nurture, nurturing and great academic standards, but the magic happens in the classroom. Teaching is a hands-on and holistic profession. Teachers are essential. If going back to school is the right path, as the current data, as well as our local pediatricians and public health officials suggest, I ask that this, I ask that this community be more vigilant with mask-wearing, cognizant of your travel plans and microgroups. Social distancing when out in public, and I ask for your patience with staff, faculty and administrators as they begin to iron out the pieces of this puzzle in regards to content, curriculum, technology, communication, and implementation of this very unique plan in this difficult and trying time. Thank you.
That was great. Thank you, Nicole.
Well said, Nicole.
Very well said. Maybe I won't read my comments. No, I will. No, I think that, I think that you're able to sum it up perfectly, Nicole, because you're in a unique situation. As you mentioned that you're working at a school, you're a mom, you have very, a lot of different hats, and I think that that puts a lot of perspective on this. More perspective than I can, than I can give, for sure. So I'll let everyone else speak again, but I'm going to go now with mine. And I have a statement and then I have some questions that I, that I have as well. All right, here we go. We are here to approve the framework for our district and how we will operate during each phase of school reopening. I've had many sleepless nights and stress-filled days leading up to this meeting. I am a dad, I am a husband, and I am a son. None of this has been easy. I also have a full-time job. I only mention these things because I think it's important to understand my perspective. I'm not just a school committee member. I'm a real person. I have a daughter who will be in sixth grade at Gates, a school named after her great-grandfather. I have a son with special needs who attends an out-of-district placement. I can empathize with every single one of you as you each have your own family makeup and dynamic. What is missing in this whole process is real leadership at the state level from those with expertise and resources to properly guide us. Superintendent Burkhead has officially been with us for exactly 41 days. He, along with the task force, district leadership team and school committee, have been diligently working towards our guiding principles. In my opinion, we look with great anticipation to our leaders at the state level to determine the matrix that will dictate when we move from red to orange to yellow to green. To date, our state leadership has failed us. As Superintendent Burkhead noted in his letter previously, he made mention of this as well. I will not pretend to recognize when it's appropriate for students and staff to return to school. I will look for medical experts, experts to provide those guidelines. I do hope our leaders at the state level will provide guidance so that our town does not become divided on this issue. As we approached the middle of August, I would have hoped at tonight's school committee meeting that we could be gathering excitement for the new school year, talking about the usual hot topics such as kindergarten enrollment, bus riderships and routes, approving field trips, finalizing plans for the first day of classes and energizing both students and staff for another year of school. Instead, we're dealing with the pandemic. It has turned our world, our country, our state and our town upside down. We are not immune to it. We now must confront it as it relates to our schools, specifically for purposes of this board, how to meet the needs of our school age children. It's important to recognize that not only are we, you are elected members, but we also have sons, daughters, grandchildren attending our schools. When we take the oath to serve, we make a promise to do what is in the best interest for all the approximately 3,000 students in the district. What I have learned over the past several days and weeks as we search for the perfect solution in returning to school, that Situate should be very proud. In the midst of receiving hundreds of emails offering opinions, recommendations, questions and complaints, is that we just want to go back to what we once had. Families are yearning for kindergartners to begin their spectrum of learning. Sixth graders are looking forward to the many new opportunities that await at the middle school. Students in all grades are wanting to reconnect with their teachers, friends and classmates. Others want to gain access to unique courses generally available in our curriculum such as Mandarin, AP Calculus or AP Physics. Every email I received expressed an opinion. These opinions were well-written, thoughtful, and in most cases, very hard to disagree with. Unfortunately, it will be absolutely positively impossible to satisfy everyone. But the one constant in all these emails was that everyone wanted access to the greatness that Situate was just a shoot, that Situate was just a few short months ago. Parents want their children to grow and learn in a safe, supportive, inclusive environment. For those that know me, I can be classified as a negative person. I, however, like to think I'm a realist. In all of this, in all that each and every one of us is currently dealing with, I am actually positive as it relates to our schools. I am positive because Situate was doing something. I am positive because Situate was doing something right. We have engaged our entire community because we all want what is best for our kids. What is clear is the best thing for our kids is to access, is access to our teachers, specialists, principals and all the other numerous staff who support the Situate educational experience. What that means is my general aura of negativity has met its match. It shows that as a community, we are all in this together and working towards a common goal. We all want to get back to what we once had because we, because what we once had was great. Thank you. I have a couple of questions, Superintendent Burkhead. I guess the first question is relative to the state level direction. How often are you available? Does the commissioner make himself available to you and other superintendents?
Regularly, I mean, we have, the meetings kind of pop up as needed. So there's no set, you know, we'll get a day or two notice on when the meeting comes up. But we've got a cell phone number every time I have texted him or called him. I've gotten a response within 24 hours. So I will say that the commissioner is accessible. And has, has directed me anytime I need it and I've had, I've had to communicate with him a few times.
Okay, great. As all the other school members addressed, because it was very prevalent in the emails that we received from families and concerned families, was about the remote learning. So I don't want to get into, I just want to again state that we do need to make a change to that remote learning option. It was a clear negative in the original plan and something that we need, we need to change. And I think that you've heard that loud and clear, but I wanted to mention that as well. Because as I went through all the emails, that was just the same thing that kept coming up over and over again from a negative side. Another one, again, this is as we fine tune it. Has there been additional thought to cohorts? I know that way back a couple of weeks ago, I had mentioned maybe keeping cohorts as, in terms of their, their school districts. I'm not sure if you've done some pros and cons versus that versus the alphabetical option. I guess I just want to make sure that it, that it's been thought of and there's rationale for doing one over the other.
Thank you. It's a, it's a great question. We have talked about it several times. We in fact talked about it today. It did come up in some feedback from parents about neighborhood, kind of keeping kids together, that kind of grouping, cohorting. It's just not logistically possible. Trying, the, the original goal is to keep family members together, knowing that some are in elementary, middle or high school, spread across some other times. So I think also with the limitations we have on the number of bus ridership we can have, I think we want to have a handsful, just getting everybody there on time without changing school start time. So we did talk about that. The most logical way to achieve our goal of keeping families together on the same days and that type of thing is the alphabet. Also with the understanding, Mr. Gates, that we will work with families individually. Because there were some individual requests, like if there's a different last name, certainly that will be taken care of. Or if there's another specific need that a family has to travel together, you know, that all will be dealt with individually and we'll be happy to accommodate that. But I think to, to answer your question, we did talk about cohorting as far as transportation. And second, secondly, and I think Ms. Brennely brought this up about looking at our cohorts. I do think we have to look at those at the secondary levels even closer. It's natural in those levels to exchange classes, especially at the high school. So we can spend some more, we will spend some more time on how we try to keep cohorts together as much as possible and not moving from class to class as much.
Okay. I just, again, I know that that's going to be a very, that's going to be a very difficult challenge. But I just, I don't want to dismiss the idea of, and again, I don't want to make recommendations. I know you've heard plenty of them. Even though our elementary schools, our neighborhood schools, I wouldn't necessarily discount middle school and high school from just creating cohorts based upon their, technically their home school, elementary school. Just a thought. I don't want to provide you with a million different ideas, but that's just something.
That's, that's appreciated and that has come up and it's, it's not off the table. So thank you. Yep.
Good. And is Dr. Lane on the call today?
No, he's not.
Okay. And then I guess, you know, we could sit here for days and we could ask millions of questions and make a variety of comments. But I think that the work that you and the team have done so far, puts us in a firm foundation. There are going to be questions every day. I expect it. There will be questions, you know, you know, forever. So I don't expect that we're going to have, you know, satisfactory answers for everyone. But, but what we've done so far, what you've done so far has, has been, has been great. I guess the other concerns I've heard from the staff are substitutes, kind of how that will look or, or kind of what is in the plan? If the plan potentially addresses that? Meaning will there be able to, will there be enough substitutes? It'd probably be more, obviously much more difficult to find substitutes in the, in this particular environment.
Yes, and it's an excellent point, but it's something obviously we're very concerned about. It will be difficult, so we have to be proactive in looking for substitutes. I also think that we've learned a lot with Zoom and with our technology ability to support student learning through either Zoom meetings or other remote styles of learning. So I think we can accomplish some of that through technology. But there's no question about it that, you know, we're going to be looking for substitutes. And we've been talking about it. So we'll be putting the word out there, you know, as soon as possible. I know we've already had several conversations, but it's, it's an obvious need for every school district that, you know, no school district pays a lot of money for substitute to bring people in, you know. So maybe we can consider some incentives or things like that, but we'll, it's fairly, it's definitely a top concern for us.
Okay. And then my last one was just similar to all the other, other school committee members mentioned. But again, I just want to make mention of it is looking at ways to potentially limit the number of students that the secondary teachers see. But again, that was a constant theme as well in some of the feedback I received or that you saw as well. That's all that I have. School committee members have any other questions or comments before I open up to public comments?
I had, I wanted, I could speak to testing only because I, I am tested now weekly. And I know a lot of people, that is one thing that people have asked about is, you know, how are we going to be testing staff and/or students? And unless something drastically changes with the testing procedure, there's really, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be getting, I'll be getting tested tomorrow and I still haven't received the result that I had from last week. So it's, which is, it's, that's another, that's another issue I could go into. But so the, the lack of appropriate testing is a, is a huge problem. And I also, you know, I guess I can read my statement too. I, I know a lot of the conversation has been about what's best for the kids. And I don't think anybody doesn't think that the kids need to get back to school. And we're going to try to do that the best we can. But I think one, and we are trying to make it safe for the staff. But I think a lot of the discussion or not enough discussion has been about what the staff might be feeling. I can speak to what my kids are feeling. There are, you know, some of them, one of them is afraid to go back. So I did make a statement, write up a quick statement, not as eloquent as Nicole's or, or Peter's. But I first would like to thank Superintendent Burkhead and the steering committee for all the work that went into formulating the safe and strong plan to return to school. I'm sure members of the steering committee spent hours, both together and individually, on what would work best for our district. Since the plan was unveiled last Thursday, we have received countless emails from family and staff with legitimate concerns or questions about the plan and some constructive feedback and suggestions. Most of you may not know what I, what I do, but I am considered an essential worker. I was given the choice to continue to work when COVID burst back in March when the state was shut down. I could either work or resign. I chose to work. And I would begin every day thinking, is this the day I'm going to get COVID? Or is this the day I will spread COVID to my residents, not knowing that I have it? Or if I woke up with a scratchy throat, is, do I have it? Have I spread it to my family? These are the questions that I'm sure teachers will be asking themselves if we return too soon to a hybrid model. And it's not because they don't want to do their job. Much like I love my job, in the population I work with, the teachers love their jobs and the students they teach. It is because of my experiences at work with the ever-changing rules and guidelines that come from DPH, CDC, epidemiology, et cetera, as well as the lack of adequate and timely testing, that I feel that we should start the school year remotely. By doing so, we'll better, we will better prepare teachers and students for what I feel is the inevitable, total remote learning because of the increase in positive cases. And I don't dispute the fact that kids need to get back to school. Of course they do, but only if we are absolutely sure that they and the staff will be 100% safe. And the current hybrid model as presented, as referring to last week's, I feel does not do that and leaves questions to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Any other questions or comments from the school committee at this time?
Good.
All right, seeing none.
Other than, well said, Janice, other than that.
Thank you.
You and Peter did a great job presentations.
Thank you. I thank you for the opportunity to do it. It's not often that you can speak to nearly 400 stakeholders in the Situate public schools at once. So I appreciate that. I hope that it was, I hope that Janice, Ms. Limbombs and Ms. Brennely's words, as well as mine, were were listened to and understood. I think that it's very important, tells a lot about, about us as, as a school committee.
And as you said earlier today, Pete, we all have skin in this game. And we're just trying to do the best that we possibly can.
Yep. Okay. I'll give the, I'll give the school committee one more opportunity after public comment before we vote with any further questions or comments. At this time, I will open up to the public for comments, questions or statements. For those of their new, at the bottom of your Zoom screen, if you have a question, hit the reaction emoji to raise your hand. I will then acknowledge you. If you could state your name, if you're comfortable, you can state your address. If you don't feel comfortable in stating your address, please state the school that either a child or that you, child attends or that you work at. I'm, I'm not going to commit to answering all questions. I gladly listen to and allow any comments or statements. I just can't, I can't, I can't necessarily commit to answering every question because we all have lots of questions and they'll continue to infinity. I, I'm not going to put a limit on the time of public comment, though I will limit each individual's time to three minutes. It's 7:04 right now. I'd like to complete this. Normally want to put a limit on it, but hopefully we can minimize or get to all of you and not be here till midnight. So with that being said, Stephen McGuire, you're up.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I want, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thanks. So I'll introduce myself in a second. I'm just going to use notes because that's easier for me. I want to thank Mr. Burkhead for his opening statement. And thank you to all the school committee for what you just read also. And we're very grateful for you to take comments before the vote. My name is Steve McGuire and I'm a teacher at the high school. And this fall will be my 20th year teaching in Situate. Also, my wife Jess and I have four kids at Jenkins in grades five, three, two and one. So I also have a vested interest as both a teacher and a parent in town. And as parents, Jess and I want our kids back in school. And we were a part of the 84% number that was taken from the survey. As a teacher, I want to be back in school with students. And as others have said tonight, I want folks to be aware that there are a large number, it's not everybody, but there's a large number of teachers and staff that are critically concerned for our in-person return to work with students. Teachers want to be in person with students. That's why we got into the profession. However, if you run the numbers, even in the hybrid model, some staff are going to be working with 50 to 70 different students a day or up to 100 to 140 students a week over that course. This is definitely a concerning level of exposure for everybody. There's so many positives to the plan that's been created and I'm advocating that you pass this plan tonight. But please consider starting the year in the red phase. Let us as teachers spend the time getting excellent at remote learning in our pre-planning for the school year. Unfortunately, many people feel like we'll be heading that way eventually anyway. Finally, as a dad, I wanted to share that on August 5th, the results of the staff reopening survey were shared with staff and the school committee. And from that survey, 35% or 115 of the staff answered that they will not return to work either under the current plan. They'll not return to work by way of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. They'll retire or they'll take a one-year leave of absence. And so I appreciate you listening to my comment, but my question again, as a father is, if that's still the case, do we know who's going to teach our kids and is that number still valid? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Could you just clarify your question? What number were you referring to?
Okay, I, sorry, I was still muted. So we, we got, sorry about that. We, we took a survey as a faculty and the numbers that we got back that was sent to both the school committee and to the Situate teachers are that if, would teachers return in person? And 115, 115 staff members said that they were, they would not return to work. They would either take a year leave of absence, they would use the Family First Coronavirus Act, or they would retire. And I guess my, my question is, is that number still correct? Are there really 115 faculty and staff that won't return? And if that is the case, that's incredibly concerning because who's going to teach our kids? And who are our colleagues going to be? I know we're looking for substitute, but that's, I, I think that number would be very different if we started in the red phase. A lot of those people may not retire, may not take the year leave of absence, knowing that that was going to be the case.
Mr. Burkhead, would you be able to comment, was that a survey, that the survey that you had put out?
I believe that's the one Mr. McGuire is referring to. That was a while back. We haven't re-surrounded since we haven't finalized this current plan. But I want to thank Mr. McGuire for his comments. They were excellent as a, as a parent, you know, educator. I think it was very well said. And I agree with it. But no, we haven't. So, you know, I'd like to work with the STA after the vote tonight and sending out another more comprehensive survey to get that more information from our staff. And that would be a wise thing to do. All legitimate, great points.
Thank you. Jennifer O'Neil.
Hi, Peter. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, thank you so much for, for taking my comment. Jennifer O'Neil, I am the parent of a Situate high school student and also a member of the task force, parent representative on the health and safety subgroup. And I just wanted to mention, and I sent this to the school committee as well, that hundreds of hours went into the development of this plan and every stakeholder was fairly represented. We reviewed every single email that was sent to the, the open 2020 reopen to principals, to Superintendent Burkhead. And we took all of that information when we came up with, you know, our recommendations to Superintendent Burkhead in his development of this plan. As a member of the health and safety subgroup, I can tell you, we talked a lot about metrics. What would the right metrics be? And again, just echoing what everyone else has said, without, I think, some guidelines from Desi or Governor Baker, you know, it'll be upon the school committee to come up with those metrics. And I think I have faith in the leadership that I've seen through this entire process that that will happen. But I do believe that a vote needs to be taken on this plan tonight as presented. There, voting, you're voting on the entire plan. There's a color-coded system. And those will be put into place based on, you know, the local and those will be put into place based on, you know, the local and state COVID numbers. And as of September 16th, those numbers could change. They could go up, they could go down, they could stay the same. But we really need to start moving forward on a plan for parents, a plan for staff, and just a plan for the community so that we know what we're going to be doing come September 16th. So I just, I urge you all to vote tonight and I am actually urging that you all vote yes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, whoops, Melissa Uzak.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for taking my, my comment. And again, thank you so much for all your hard work, you guys. I don't know how you're all doing this, but um, thank you. So my, my comment is just a food for thought tip comment. My husband and I are parents of a Gator, a Heatherly, and a Creekay little guy. We're on countryway here in Situate. And we just wanted to float the idea out there about the potential for when we're doing either the hybrid or the remote or fully remote, the idea of bringing in college-level student teachers as support people for, for the classroom teachers. Allowing student teachers to go ahead and get the hours that they're going to need. Many of them are going to be remote learning themselves and partnering with public schools as, just as a support. So it's just an idea that some parents and I have been, a lot of parents and I have been talking about and just, just something we're floating out there that we'd like for you guys to consider if it's at all possible. That's just my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly taken under advisement and added to the list. Sounds like a reasonable recommendation to explore. Next up is Michelle Rama Pochia.
Pocha, hi. I would like to thank everybody who has been working so hard on creating these plans and I appreciate everybody's statements. They, they really spoke to me and kind of a relief to hear that you have the same concerns. I sent an email earlier today and I'm not going to read that to everybody, but my main concern relates to the half-day option for hybrid. It seems like, I'm sure this, a lot of thought was put into this and, you know, it's not a critique so much as, you know, asking like what, how flexible that is because it could be very onerous for many families who work full-time. Just wanted to know, you know, if, like, on voting on this particular framework, if things like that are flexible? Or would you have to go back to the drawing board and rewrite that section if, you know, that becomes a point of contention? Also, I want to ask that we start also, as others have said, in red mode, which is full remote, in the absence of leadership from our governor and others. Because, you know, it's clear they don't want to be responsible. I think that, that lack of guidance forces us to be as conservative as possible, especially as 150 teachers have said they won't return to school if there is a hybrid option. So I just really wanted to highlight those things and ask that question.
Thank you. Superintendent Burkhead, could you just give a little bit of discussion? The original plan had the, at the elementary level, it had the full days, two on, two off. Could you just explain a little bit of the rationale for the change? I think that you did last meeting, but if you would be able to do that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you. It's, it's good questions. It's that like, back and forth. I think that the first round, we were kind of committed to having one model, K through 12. And then as we got more and more feedback and saw what other districts were doing, we thought we certainly could be flexible within what we did in our elementary versus what we did in our secondary, as long as it fit what our guiding principles were. And one that we were really, and a lot of the feedback from our first model to this draft here was that elementary parents were pretty adamant about more, the more face-to-face daily contact with adults, the better for their children. They also, that was coupled with the concern of a, a full day right away for our younger children. So the combination of two things made us, you know, kind of review and reassess the half-day AM PM mode. We know it's not necessarily great for for working parents necessarily, but I don't think there, there isn't a plan out there that is. It does give consistency, you know, in, in that it has, you know, a set schedule for all kids. So that's kind of the background to it. But we honestly believe, and we also have received a lot of positive feedback on that model as well, because we went from, I think, just K to two and now we went to K to five in the hybrid model in short bursts of two and a half, three hours a day instead of a full and a half hour day, which many thought was too much. So we started off with half-days and that's kind of how that came about.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Cheryl Pace. Cheryl?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say that I'm a, who lost my notes on it? I'm a teacher at the high school level and a parent of three in the community and I'll just keep brief. I just really want to thank Janice and Steve and Michelle for suggesting starting in the red zone. I'd like to second, third that as well.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it. Sorry, I'm having trouble.
Thank you. John Scopoletti.
Hi, folks. So John Scopoletti, English Department Chair, parent of a rising senior, parent of a rising second, third and fourth grader at Wampatuck. Thank you all for, whether it's responding, whether it's your, your statements, all the work that you're putting into it. It's definitely appreciated. I just had a quick clarifying question about the vote for tonight. Is this vote to support the plan and push it forward and to start in the orange, or is that two separate votes?
So that's a good question. I'll let Mr. Burkhead start and then I will add potentially if, if necessary. Superintendent Burkhead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scopoletti. Great question. Originally, we put the plan out, it was my thought to recommend a vote and to start with hybrid. And with our numbers, I would, you know, I would support that right now. However, my guidance for the school committee would be that maybe picking what model we go with right now might be premature. We don't have a metric. We don't have a model. I think voting on the plan so we can get to work on the details of each of the plans would give us guidance as educators and then develop a metric, because without a metric, I don't know that we should vote on which one to start with at this point. I think it would give us, you know, all a little more flexibility to come up with our own metric, as Ms. Brindelini has suggested, or compare it versus statewide model or metric that comes up. So my recommendation to the school committee would be that we just vote on the plan tonight and we at a later meeting, when we have more information and potentially a better metric or a metric to make that decision at a later meeting.
Pete, may I say something? Yes.
And John, I mean, my support of the plan was based upon what Bill had just said, that, that where, where, in my view is I'm voting on an outline and, and the, the four different colored options without any vote at all as to where, what we're going to be doing on the 16th of September. There's still too much work to be done and decisions to be made, in my view, before, before we do that. And I was going to ask a question of Bill as well, is that when we get to the point where we're going to vote on whichever of the four we're going to vote on, is that a school committee vote? And would it be a school committee vote, say, to go from orange to green or orange to yellow or orange to red? But those are school committee votes, correct? Yes, sir. And the only one that we need to run by Desi is if we close down a school or a district. So if we start off in hybrid, for example, and we go to red, school committee decision, obviously, it's just an FYI to the, the Desi. That's all. But yes, you're right. The school committee has that prerogative.
Okay.
Can I make a comment too, Peter?
Yes, you may.
I just want to say too, that I think, as I said before, we have to come up with our own metrics because, I mean, none of us have any faith that A, the metric's going to come out when we need it to, and B, that it's going to be applicable to Situate or valid and all, all the above based on what we've seen from Desi. But it would be, I mean, this is more of just like a larger statement about the state really, really, really should be doing this because as district, like, we are taking care of Situate. This is where we live and work. And, you know, naturally our staff, some of whom do not live in this particular town. But my point is that for equity purposes, the state should be coming up with this metric because we have resources and manpower and all different things that we can, we're able to provide for our students, fortunately. Other towns are unable to do that. They have tighter classrooms, more kids per teacher, not enough space. Just the list goes on. So it really, really is imperative that the state comes out with guidelines for this so that we all have the same metrics. And when those metrics are met at each district, that triggers a pushback in a phase. It really is common sense and it's public health and it's equitability. It's just, it's ridiculous. That's all for now for me. Comments over on that. I just support, I just really wish that we would get more direction from the state. And then if it's, if we wanted to tighten up on it, we could. But I mean, just for all kids, it's just not equitable at all. I'm just very.
Especially Nicole, when, if you follow news reports, 100,000 kids have tested positive in two weeks. And that the number of positive children is.
Lost your mic. Can school committee hear me?
Yeah.
Lost my. So I just want to comment on that. I don't want to contradict anything. Superintendent Burkhead, if in fact, we do need to vote on which plan to do by Friday, we would just need to do that. I've had several conversations today that I kind of got both sides of the coin here, that we were just voting on framework versus we needed to pick which one we wanted to move forward. I feel much more confident voting on just the framework and if we needed to vote on on which one we wanted to utilize initially or as of today, that we would need to convene again and have another meeting to vote that. I just want to make sure that we do that correctly because I know that, again, I'm going to refer to the headlines that we see in the newspaper, that so-and-so district, you know, votes to go remote or votes to go hybrid or whatever it is. And I'm not sure what the Situate headline will read tomorrow. So I want to make sure that we, that we do it correctly. And again, I've heard a couple of different opinions on it and I will go with your recommendation and it makes me feel better to do that. However, I want to, you know, make certain that that is all that Desi requires at this time. Again, I'm going to agree with the committee, I think, agreeing with everybody on this call, that we need metrics to dictate which, which color we should go with.
Yeah, I guess my response would be that the Department of Education would prefer that we have a preferred plan going in. But they also have stated that it's the school committee's responsibility. And it's, it's your plan. So you, in my opinion, you have the prerogative to do whatever you want. And, you know, I think just because, I, I think the headline should be that, you know, Situate had the guts to make the right decision based on their community and their families and their staff. In that we don't have a metric, so we don't feel comfortable voting on a, what we're going to start with five weeks out. And I think anybody that's listening here would respect that. I get, it's still, and I know people want to make plans, but I still think if waiting a week or two weeks still gives people plenty of time and also gives us the peace of mind that we're really taking our time and doing this thing safe. It's not going to stop us from progressing in our work and preparing all three models very well or slow us down. So I, I don't see any benefit in even, you know, voting on that tonight when we're five weeks out and we have no metric. So.
I'm, I'm in full agreement. I just wanted to make sure that we met, you know, I guess we're trying to meet the state standards and they won't meet our standards, but I want to make sure that we do all that we can and, and aren't penalized to any degree.
No, we'll have a vote on plan tonight and I'll send it forward.
Okay. Okay. Mrs. Scopoletti, was that all? Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I have to unmute you. Katie Boucher, you're up.
Hi, thanks for taking my question. I am a mom to two middle school students. But my, my concern, and maybe it's ignorance on my part, and, and that's why I'm asking the question. My concern's with the elementary schools. I looked at the model and from a developmental point of view, it makes perfect sense to have the kids in there as often as possible. What I'm concerned about though is how are the buildings going to be cleaned in between cohorts going in? Because even as a middle school mom, there're just, there's so much that we were just even saying about transmission between kids, between siblings. So I was, that, that's just what I was curious about was how will it be cleaned for, especially in them, especially in some of our older buildings with HVAC systems.
Mr. Burkhead, I know you had, you and Mr. Dylan had commented on that at our last meeting. If you could just provide a quick overview again of that. If I'm allowed to, I would say that I have, that was one of the other questions that I had is the actual, how is the cleaning going to happen?
Yeah, and it's, it's a great question. We've gotten a lot of feedback in between the first draft. I mean, we talked, you know, Desi has guidelines for the cleaning. We've shared them. They're in our document. It talks about a lot of high-touch areas. You know, we thought we'd go above and beyond and use the foggers in between the cohorts, just as another safety mechanism. A lot of people brought up concerns about, and staff brought up concerns about now being exposed to that. I know Mr. Dylan had shared that those are CDC-approved, you know, but it's more chemicals and things like that. So we're now re-looking at that and possibly just going back down to wiping things down and doing a cleaning that way in between and not using the fog as well. Students and staff are in the building. So I think the feedback has been excellent on that. And it's just another example on, you know, how we still are evolving on how we're doing this and the feedback is helpful. And we just want to do it safe by everybody. So that's a good example of, you know, maybe we don't use those foggers if people are nervous about that or that it's more, more chemicals that they may be opposed to, that we could use safer chemicals in between and get the job done just as well.
Okay, thank you. Erin Mitchell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my question, I don't know if I'm getting like way ahead of myself, but either the all-remote model or this hybrid model is going to require some sort of virtual learning. I have two Heatherly kids, second grade, first grade, and then two under them. So my second grader is the oldest. We get a lot of commotion and I'll of course need two devices. If in fact, we are fully remote or partially remote, everybody's going to need a device one way or another. I know they were loaning them out in the spring. Is that something that would still be accessible or do I need to try to factor in like purchasing devices for my kids to be able to, be able to be on at the same time?
Mr. Burkhead, could you review the loaner program?
Yes. It's an excellent question. No, we don't expect you to go and buy new computers. We do have computers. We'll make sure that students have them, families have them in excess. And we, again, brought that up at our meeting today. So we'll be sending out specific information on that, you know, on that, requesting information back from parents and families that may need that, especially those with multiple children. So we'll make sure we address that.
Okay. And I just had one other question where if they do go, you know, the half-day, would they have access to like a reading specialist or a math specialist in school? Or is that something that again, would have to be done like via Zoom or remotely? Just because that is a major concern and my oldest requires those extra teachers and that extra help and she really needs it now. So I'm hoping that one way or another we can incorporate those, you know, those specialists back in for her.
I'll allow that question. It is very student-specific, which we're not generally wanting to respond to, but I think it is, it is probably an appropriate question for the general population. So if Mr. Burkhead give a brief, brief response to that.
Yeah, my, my initial response is absolutely. Everybody will get, you know, the similar services. They might look differently. I know we have a lot of our, we may have our elementary principals out there, but I'll open it up to anyone that wants to jump in and.
And I didn't mean to make it like. I didn't mean to make it like super specific to just my child, but I'm, I would assume that there are other kids that need those specialists also. So I'm just curious how that will be done, you know, in this type of framework.
I would, I would say it's probably a legitimate question that is probably still being worked out, and the building principals might be the best to help, as they're going to be facilitating some of the staff.
Yeah, and again, it's a great question, and we're happy to take all questions tonight. So, and of course, we want them specific to your children, that's what we're here for. So it's an awesome question. And again, if there's an elementary principal that wants to jump in after, that's great. If not, we are having those forums this week. And I do agree with Chairman Gates, that's an excellent question that can be answered during those forums, very specific to your child and your school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Burkhead, could you just give a brief overview of what the building principals will be putting on this week? I think that might help prepare some folks as well, if you haven't already mentioned.
Yeah, I'm not, some of them may have already gone out yet. Every principal in the district will be inviting families to a forum similar to that I have done with the community, with parents. Opening that up, kind of like we're doing tonight, just a Q and A and answering questions. We thought it would be very valuable to have that, once the detailed plan and people have had some time to look at it, to start asking specific questions, building-based. We want to start localizing things. It'll be helpful, hopefully, to the parents, to get specific questions answered at the school they'll be going to. And we also will believe it will be helpful to us to get that feedback as well. If we don't have the questions, to make sure that we include them in improving our plan. So that'll all happen this week at all schools.
Thank you. Okay, Roxanne Griffin. You're on.
Hi, I am a teacher at the high school, and I guess I just have a comment and a request. I understand that the committee is looking for metrics and data about how to reopen, and when and which phase is best, and when. I guess I'm going to speak on behalf of the teachers that I have spoken to, that, you know, the sooner that that decision can be made for us, I think the more confident we can feel that we are prepared to go back into the building, and we can address these specific questions that a lot of parents have. Because a lot of those decisions about how to best support students are going to be made by the actual teachers working with them. As a special ed teacher, I'm going to need to look at every kid's plan and figure out how to best differentiate not just the regular curriculum, but now in this brand-new style of teaching that we're going to have to work in. So I would just encourage the committee to, you know, give teachers as much lead, lead time as possible as to what phase we are going to open, and so we can start planning as soon as humanly possible. Because I know that is currently creating a lot of anxiety for teachers who have more than 100 students. They see different levels, different, different subjects. And the more leeway time that you can give us, I think the more prepared and the more developed these lessons are going to be come the fall. So just thank you for that.
Understood, thank you.
Peter, question?
Yes, by you?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about what was just said by Ms. Griffin there. So should we come up with a deadline? Like, this is, I mean, because the metrics and stuff, like, we can't predict what cases are going to look like. We hope they're going to steady, but, I mean, who's to say? It's so unpredictable. We should have it in, kind of like, this is the line, like, how many days, weeks? You know, how long before the start date of school? We decide what phase to begin in, if this is the direction we're going with our vote.
Yeah, well, I think it's important, Nicole, is we all, we need to figure out what this metric is. And if the state doesn't determine it, we're going to have to figure, and this is where we all agree, how do we know what that metric should be? So we're going to have to come up with our own experts to determine what that metric is, and if we meet that. So yeah, I agree.
Parents needed a date that they know which lever we're going to pull here. Mentally and literally, they have to prepare for what's ahead.
Right, I mean, I don't want to put a date right now, but obviously, this, we're going to be meeting every Monday. Let's call it between now and then, so as soon as, as soon as possible. But we're going to have to come up with an alternative solution if the state does not provide these, these metrics.
And I mean, right, right now, CDC's at 5%, which is obviously way too high, in my view. So, I mean, if worse comes to worse, we'll have to just pick a number we're all comfortable with, which will hopefully be less than half of CDC's.
Okay, I'm, just want to make a comment to those that are in attendance. There are some principals who may want to comment. If you would like to comment, I, I need to unmute you. So if you could raise your hand, or, yeah, raise your hand and maybe rename your screen to principal, something to that effect, I can, I can call on you and unmute you. In terms of renaming yourself, you just go over to the right, or click on your name and hit the rename option.
And I'd love to hear our teachers and staff, and even parents, obviously, you know, what, what we all think is a, an average that would be, I mean, because this is not, I just, I don't think, based on everything we know about the virus, which is so little, it's not going away anytime soon, we're never going to get that, like, 0% or .2, 3, 4. You know, what is the number that we in Situate are comfortable with? We have to know it, regardless of which model we choose even. Just like, because I don't think we're ever going to have a non-coronavirus time again. Not going to get 0, it's certainly not in the next several years, even if, you know, vaccines, herd immunity, all the things that are out there, who's to say? Even with all those things, look at the flu, vaccines exist, we still have the flu. So we're never going to get this 0, so I think we do need a metric ASAP.
I agree. Mr. Burkhead, that's, that's our task to you, another one of your to-do lists. We need to come up with, we need to determine this matrix as soon as we can, whether the state or ours. And, you know, obviously, it's our opinion, I believe, that we're looking for guidance from the state. Okay, again, if there's any principals out there that would like to comment, please raise your hand, and if possible, also change your screen name so that I can identify you as a principal. At this point, Maureen is up next.
Hi, I'm a paraprofessional at Gates. And I'm wondering that since half the learning is done in the hybrid model, and so half the kids are going to be doing it remotely, why isn't that offered to teachers? Because the teachers, there's a lot of them with health issues, and to ask them to make the decision of your health or unemployment just doesn't seem fair. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a, the next up is, has a screen name of Galaxy S10E. The floor is yours.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Jason, I have two, two children in the Wampanoag School.
Okay, your last name, Jason?
Excuse me?
Your last name, Jason?
Jason Fricker.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. A couple of comments I'd just like to make. I know, and I thank you all for all the hard work you put into it. And I know it's a difficult decision for everybody, but a comment that Ms. Lindblom made earlier.
I can't quite hear you, Jason.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
That's better.
A comment made earlier from Ms. Lindblom that I heard is that...
We're losing you again, I can't really hear you.
We're sort of in the throbbing middle of a pandemic. And like, like was just stated, even if we get a vaccine in December, it's still, the flu vaccine right now is typically 20 to 50% effective. Children still die of the flu. It's going to be something that we're going to be living with for a long time. So I don't think we're ever going to get, I figure right now, we're at a positivity rate of 1.8% in the state. I don't see us getting much better than that. I feel if we don't go back now, at least to the hybrid, when, when are we going to? Because this is going to keep, I mean, in reality, the virus is going to keep spreading, the numbers are going to keep going up. And I just feel if we don't get there now, you know, we may never get these kids back to school. And on, another comment was made with teachers and how many students they're in contact with. I feel if we follow the CDC guidelines, with children wearing masks and social distancing, you know, you can be basically in contact with an unlimited number of people. Because as long as you're following those guidelines, you know, the spread will be mitigated. So I think that's another thing we have to consider, that we're not going back to school normal. Children are going to be wearing masks. You know, we will be practicing social distancing. So we are going to be able to mitigate that spread significantly. And I think right now, the consensus is, we're all acknowledging that it's best thing for the children to get them back into school. And the CDC has placed guidelines on how we safely and effectively do that. And I think if we follow those guidelines, the best option we have is to at least try the hybrid model. Because I feel if we don't get the hybrid model in the fall, we're never going to get these kids back to school. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you very much.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, I thought I lost you there, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, I'm not sure if you've already had a chance, I'll see, Melissa Guzek?
Hi, yes, I did, and I'll keep this very brief. I just wanted to speak to your metric really quick. I think that when we're considering the metric, just like our, our CDC guidance, this has got to be a fluid metric. It's going to have to change based on, so people are saying, what's our comfort level? What's our comfort level with the number of confirms and the number of cases in general, right? So this is, understanding what a safe metric is, looking at trajectory over periods of time, is going to be an ever-evolving metric for the foreseeable future. So I think that if you start thinking in that direction, then I think we're going to feel a little less crazy about this, right? Now, and again, speaking to that ever-evolving metric, looking at trajectory, looking at how the CDC guidelines are going to change and evolve, that's why we need to have a rich array of options as far as synchronous, asynchronous, and support on those for our remote learning. And that can look like a lot of different things. And again, that's probably a deeper conversation that we can get into as we, as this evolves. But I do think that looking at options based on an ever-evolving situation is going to be extremely important when understanding our comfort level with a merchant. That's my statement, thank you.
Agreed. I think that we need, we need guidance on this. I think this is maybe where we could focus some efforts. I know that we are working with the Board of Health as well, with the town. So we're going to need guidance from, from there, as well as, you know, hopefully, a team of experts that can really provide guidance. That's what's going to drive this, in my opinion. All right, next is Stacy Jones Carey. Whoops. You're up.
Hi, I'm Stacy Jones Carey, I live at 708 Country Way. And I'm actually, I own a local business in town as well, and I've been working with the Situate Loves Local Subcommittee of the EDC for the last five months on safely reopening businesses with COVID. We were working in conjunction with the Board of Health. And originally, I recommended to the Safe and Strong Opening Committee, very early on, that I believe there is a way to do hybrid safely. And then, just probably in the last few weeks, I've seen things that gave me pause, specifically the numbers for the teachers as far as their age. I found it very sobering that, you know, 70% of our teachers are over the age of 50, and 40% of those are over the age of 60. I think that puts them in a more vulnerable bracket. And I'm concerned about the rate of transmission of exposure for longer periods of time. I, as a shop owner, see customers for a very short period of time, while being able to safely distance with masks, whereas they will be with, like people have pointed out, countless number of students for much longer periods of time. My question, though, really is, the more that I thought about this, I thought originally I would try to figure out a way to send my children, one of whom is on an IP and has autism and VLD. The other is an asthmatic. And I started thinking more and more, and my husband convinced me that it was not in our daughter's best interest to send back. And now I'm looking at the fully remote program. I firmly believe we should not be outsourcing the fully remote program. I think that it would be beneficial to the children who are staying home that are in a similar situation as we are, that just don't feel, it's the safety of our childrens, or have mitigated health issues like asthma, diabetes, autoimmune disorder. And there's a fair number of us that, that we put them in the three days that the cohort is learning at home with their peers and their teacher, and then figure something else out for that two days that they are in school, that they're not in school, and the cohort is in school. Has anybody been speaking to this type of a, an idea?
There's been some work, as Mr. Burkhead explained today, on the remote-only option. Mr. Burkhead, do you have any comments on this particular idea?
No, I'm not, I'm not sure I fully understand it. It's a version of the, can you just repeat the highlights of it, I'm sorry.
Stacy?
Okay, thank you. So my concern is that if you outsource to a program and have it fully remote, that the children aren't getting that connection that they probably need with their class to prepare them for when they do rejoin their, the hybrid class. And I'm wondering if it's being discussed that they could join the hybrid class on the days that the hybrid class is remote, if the fully remote class, and then do something else on the two days that the hybrid class is in school.
Okay, thank you. We haven't discussed that variation, but it's certainly something to consider, and it's not a bad idea at all, so thank you. We're actually in the process of discussing, now that we got all the feedback on, you know, that we needed to get more in-person contact, how to do that. So our principals are here listening too, so, and members of the task force. So thank you for sharing that, truly consider it.
Thank you. Peter Blandino. You're up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I want to thank everyone for all the work you're doing. My first comment is that I get a little bit concerned when I hear comparisons to the, to the flu. This COVID-19 is not the flu, it spreads much more quickly, and it has the potential to do much more harm. I mean, we've had this now for six, going on six months. There are 160,000 people dead in this country. So I think that to compare it to the flu as a way to suggest that we can get comfortable with it might breed some complacency with the danger to, especially to our older teachers. So that's my first comment. And then I have a question about testing. Testing was discussed earlier. Janice Lindblom, I think rightly, raised some concerns about it. But my question is, are there plans to do this proactively, to test proactively? Are we only thinking of making testing kind of readily and quickly available to teachers, students, once they've already started to show symptoms? Personally, you know, I don't feel comfortable unless that, unless there's some proactive testing going on. Okay, so that's, that's my comment and my question, thank you.
I agree with you, Peter.
I think we all do, we all want improvements in testing.
And proactive.
Is it okay if I put Dr. Dutch? I know he made some comments earlier, not sure if Mr. Blandino had heard those. Dr. Dutch, would you be able to, to comment a little bit again on what our steps have been so far?
Sure. We've, we've been investigating getting testing kits so that we would be able to test teachers. And we're negotiating a rate for those test kits to see if we can include students as well. The frequency of testing of teachers is to be determined. As Janice mentioned, the results for the nasal, nasal swabs take quite a bit of time. So we're looking at the antigen test, which is a 15-minute turnaround, so we'd have the information right away. If someone is positive, those results are pretty dependable. It is the negative results that sometimes are not 100% accurate. So, but it's better than not testing at all. So we are, we are going to be able to make a recommendation to the task force and the leadership team to make some decisions about testing as we move forward.
Great, thank you. At this time, there are no other raised hands, which indicates to me there are no other questions. If you do have a question, again, under the reaction tab or reaction emoji, please click on Raise Your Hand. Oh, we have one. Shan Morrissey.
Hi, Shan Morrissey. I'm a teacher at Gates. Couple of different things. I'll try to be quick. In terms of discussing the metrics, one of the things that I haven't heard us talk about is the positive rate as compared to the testing rate. If we're not testing everybody, which is unlikely, we don't really know what the positive rate is because everybody's not being tested. And I also just want to remind people about the numbers and the testing that's been done with children in the last couple of weeks. There are more and more reports coming out about kids carrying a higher viral load. And somebody else mentioned how many kids have tested positive in the last week or two. So I think we have to really think about what our metrics mean if everyone is not being tested. We don't know what the positive rate is. And then my second comment is really just echoing what other teachers have said. We want to work with our students. We want that connection, and we also want to be safe. It's very risky at this point in time. Look at the schools that are reopening, and actually, maybe that's something that we can utilize. Johns Hopkins is actually tracking schools that are reopening in person and what their, what their cases are like. So that's another really good resource. We want to be with our kids, and we want to be safe. Thanks.
Thank you.
May I say something?
Yes, you may, Mr. Hayes.
Shan, I mean, that's a very good point regarding the number of tests, people tested. I think in the globe's printing of the state numbers today, I think only about 3,500 people in Citroen have been tested. And the, and we're at under 2%, and so it's an excellent point. You know, we have a town of 16,000 to 18,000 people. So that is, that is a big concern, obviously.
Can, can, thank you. Also, I might be wrong, but some group of scientists, I'm not sure if it's CDC, is saying that they extrapolate that the positive rate is 10 times what we're getting in numbers because our testing is, is so far behind.
Yeah, I agree. I've heard that same information numerous times, yeah.
Yep. And also, I want to thank Superintendent Burkhead for his statement at the beginning. It was really helpful to hear your feelings about it, and I agree. I can't believe the number of hours and sweat and tears and sleepless nights that our school committee and steering committee and task force have put in this year. And we all want to get to work and start planning for the safest situation for our students and our, and our, and our staff. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, another question. Jay Skypek is the handle.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. I'll be quick. I know it's getting late. I am a specialized teacher at Gates, and I have two questions.
And just your name, please.
It's Jody Skypek.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. My first question is, all of the plans that are on the table tonight, talk, have two cohorts in them, A and B, has there been any thought given if down the road, when we get down into the weeds of deciding what students are going in which cohorts? What happens if there's a need because of classroom size and physical space sizes in classroom? What happens if there needs to be maybe a third, a cohort C, or even maybe a cohort D to meet the six-feet guidelines? Where do we go from there if an A and a B is, model is decided on tonight? That's my first question.
Mr. Burkhead?
I don't think we know the answer to that. Do we know how many students plan on returning versus those that are remote? We know how many staff are returning versus those that are unable to.
Okay, and my second question is back to the, the cleaning part and chemicals used. I have read the plan, and I got to the part where it mentions that cleaning products will be EPA, I guess approved, the word was. Who makes the decision on what products are going to be used? And will there be lists of ingredients provided to families and staff when the decision is made? Or maybe it's already been made as to what chemicals will be used to clean buildings?
I know that we had that discussion and same, same question discussion at our last meeting. You know, we're only using approved cleaning materials. I know Mr. Burkhead made mention that we're re-looking at the fogger machine in between classrooms. Mr. Burkhead, do you have any additional comments, or is Mr. Dillon on this call? He's propped on you, him.
Yeah, I think Mr. Dillon commented on this last week, and we're using CDC-approved chemicals, and we'll be happy to share them with anyone that would like to see them and make sure that they're approved before we use them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Beatty, you're up.
Emute, Ryan. I'm Ryan Beatty. I'm the principal of Gates Middle School. I wanted to just echo the comment that Roxanne Griffin made earlier about kind of the need for a decision in order to start the planning process. Every stakeholder involved in this process needs time to plan. Parents need time to plan childcare. Teachers need time to plan lessons. And from an administrative standpoint, we need time to collect the information that is going to be absolutely essential to develop cohorts that are at the, you know, smallest numbers possible so that we can meet the needs of students, so that we can keep kids safe. And I fear if we push back the vote on which phase we're going to be entering, we are not going to have the time to administratively design a schedule with the students that are attending school, which ones are staying remote. I know that the key word this year is flexibility, and I think I agree with that wholeheartedly. But I think without a decision on which particular model we are planning to go with at this time, I don't think we're going to be able to collect the information and make the best possible situation possible. So I would encourage the school committee to make the decision based on the information that you have tonight, keeping in mind the safety, well-being, academic, you know, components to our students, to our staff. And I would just say that as an administrator, I would appreciate as much time as possible to plan for all three, knowing that it could change at the last minute. But until a decision's made, we will not be able to collect the information from parents and families about who is going to be in our schools.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open discussion with Mr. Burkhead here. I I do think that what Mr. Beatty says is, is, is very, is vital. We need to make sure that those that are going to be educating our students have the proper time to plan. And coming into this meeting again, I've heard two sides of it, that yes, we need to approve the framework, which we, which we will vote on. And also, there was discussion that we would need to figure out which plan we, or which color model we were going to operate under initially. Just like to open that discussion up a little bit more with Superintendent Burkhead. And if we do need to decide on a plan, whether it's tonight or next week, we'll need to certainly give the administrators and the rest of district that notification.
I think like I stated before, I don't think, you know, although I agree with Mr. Beatty that we need, the more time, the better. Since we're meeting weekly now, that decision could be made next week. Again, and we're meeting with the commissioner tomorrow. We may have a metric, may give us the time to get some scientists to work with us to get our own metric. But you don't have that tonight, so that's your call. But I think a week won't hurt us. We're going to move forward planning. We're sending surveys out. Survey can include, if we go to a hybrid model, will you be sending your child to school or not? So I think we can move forward with all of those things. But I don't disagree that we need a, we need this decision on that as soon as possible, for sure. Does not have to be tonight. It could be next week.
Okay. Jennifer O'Neil.
Hi, Peter. I'm not even sure if this is appropriate, but like they do at town meeting, can we just move the question and go to vote?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna monitor the number of questions that I have. I will allow only one question per person. How's that? So if you've already asked a question, I may not give you this, the chance. With that being said, I have Cheryl Rydell. I don't think, I know that we received emails from you. I'm not sure if we had a question from you tonight.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Rydell. I have kids in Gates, in Montauk and High School. And actually, I do have a question. Actually, I have two questions. The first is, if we go with the plan as stated right now, does the school open itself to any issues of liability should an outbreak occur? And we are faced with children and our families and/or teachers that face drastic changes in their health?
I would ask Mr. Burkhead to respond.
Can you read? I didn't hear the first part of the question about liability.
If, if, as the plan stands right now, what is the school's liability if there is an outbreak? And, and bad things happen to good people?
I think I mentioned this in my opening statement. According to our attorneys, unless you're negligently putting people in harm's way, could be sued by anybody, however. So I guess that's my answer to that.
Okay, so, so the school doesn't face, as far as we know right now, doesn't face additional levels of liability? Okay, and then, so my-
I might also add, if I may, Citroen, like all the cities and towns in Massachusetts, by state law, there is a limit to liability. And the town is insured for that as well. The only time that would not be the case is if we had our council or town council gave an opinion, and we went against that opinion. And I would assume that that would go similarly if our doctor told us to do something, or the, that group of pediatricians highly recommended that we don't do something, and we do it anyway. We could then be liable, but in general, as long as we follow legal and different standards of advice from experts, our liability is, is, we are immune from liability.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question has to do with the, the survey given to the faculty, where I believe it was 115 that said that they were questioning whether or not they could return. As the plan stands right now, it seems that the middle school and the high school teachers are still bearing the greatest rate of exposure, risk, risk-related exposure. And if that plan isn't changing, and right now as it stands, and the teachers do decide to walk, is there a mechanism by which we could amend the plan to keep as many teachers as possible?
Well, we can amend that plan five times between now and September 16th. I mean, it's possible. I mean, at some point, we need to, to say which way we're going. But one of the, in my view, one of the attractive things about our framework is that we are not locked into anything at the moment. As, as we try to, number one, obviously, we have to negotiate with the teachers. And number two, we need a lot more information from the state if, if it's going to be coming. So, and those two things might change our plans. So again, this is step one, in my opinion, and we're going to keep working hard on it.
Okay, so, so what's presented to DESI after this vote can, can still change. That mechanism does exist.
Yeah, I think Bill had said earlier, unless we vote to shut down, we don't need anybody, DESI needs to be notified, but we don't need their approval to go to a different plan, whether it's a better plan, you know, towards the green or towards the red. Is that right, Bill?
That's correct, Mr. Hayes.
Yeah.
Okay, then I, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's going to conclude the public comment statement period. It's 8:09. I think we had about an hour, and I see no more in the queue. Thank you to all that had questions and comments. At this time, any further comments or questions from the school committee? Janice?
I have a couple of questions for Bill regarding the, the cleaning in between the cohorts in the elementary level. I, I understand the idea of having the foggers would be probably more effective and having the custodians go along, go to every classroom and clean and wipe down the desks and the chairs and everything that needs to be cleaned. Would there be like a dry run of what, how long that would take? Because there is a short window of time in between the two cohorts. We need to be as effective as possible.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we talked about it today. We have to see if it's physically possible to do that before we move to that. So it just came up in conversation today, so it's a good point. We'd actually have to go and try to do it physically before we made that commitment.
Okay. And I, and I have a question too about- And I, I have a question too about, you said we would have to notify D E S I if we were to shut down a school. Could it be worked into the plan? That, I'm sorry, did you say that with the school committee would have to vote to shut down the school? Or would it just be built into the plan that under like certain parameters, the school will be shut down and we would just notify D E S I?
Either way, and you know, my recommendation and I've seen other plans is that the superintendent would also through consultation with the school committee have the power to do that. Because there may be a case where you don't have a, you know, somebody had mentioned this earlier, whether the metric, if something happens, maybe in a neighboring town, for example, they skyrocket. It's, people panic. It gets really scary. I think we need to have some of that control and ability to not be dictated completely by a metric, but on the, here on the side of safety to have some mechanism where we can make that call at the school level. And D E S I would need to know either way, did it via a metric or made the call through consultation with each other? They just want, they need to be consulted or involved in that conversation.
And that would be separate then if there was a teacher or student or other staff member that came where was positive? That's a difference. I also wanted to make comment a little bit on the testing because I have so much experience with it. And I don't know what number, you know, if that number that Mike said is accurate, but if I'm tested tomorrow, that'll be four times for the Situate residents. And I know that, and there are people that work in, in the hospitals that they're tested all the time as well, that, you know, that live in this town. But the, the rapid test, that I believe is only accurate if somebody is symptomatic. So I think that's something we really look into because that's not even being accepted at my work anymore as a condition of employment. Because unless it, it picks up the virus in a, in a window and that is when people are, you know, if they think they're sick, not that, you know, they're going to be flying somewhere where they need to have a proof of negative negativity, I guess. So I think we need to look more into that, the effectiveness and the accuracy of the rapid test. I think that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the school committee?
Peter, this is Mike. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Mike.
Sorry, my Zoom cut out. I just had a couple of quick questions for Bill. So if we continue to move forward to finalize this plan, do we have a deadline for what the district is thinking of? When that final decision will actually be made in terms of going hybrid versus remote? Are we talking a week before the 16th? Are we talking a couple of days before? Just to make sure that, you know, if things do change, that we'll just make a decision on this is when we're going to, you know, lock into an answer.
I think that's the school committee's decision. It could be tied into a metric. Could be tied into the superintendent with consultation of the school committee, like I suggested. You know, ultimately you'll decide when that decision can be made. As far as I think I'm, if I'm understanding the question correctly, I think you can make the decision as early as tonight or next week when we decide what model we want to start with. And then, once we have a metric, that can dictate it. But I think that needs to be as flexible as day to day. I mean, that's why we have the flexibility. If we believe that numbers spike in any given day, we have the, we have to have the ability to move on a dime to protect everybody. So I think that we, when we build our plan, we have that flexibility in place.
Because as I walked into this meeting tonight, you know, I, I was walking in feeling confident about making a decision on the color to start with. I think Mr. Beatty, or Principal Beatty brought up a good point about just having us, you know, knowing where we are tonight and where we can start to move forward from. I know we keep talking about the metrics, but to me, I guess this is a question to the committee. Does it make sense to vote a color tonight as part of the plan and then add the metric in after the fact as opposed to waiting to come up with a metric just so they're not waiting a week, two weeks while we try to come up with an answer? Obviously, the state's not going to come up with anything. I don't have confidence the state's going to come up with anything in the near future. And I just want to make sure that we continue to give, you know, Situate the, the good starting point for, you know, at least understand where we're coming from. I think, you know, getting 1,300 responses from the town has been amazing. And I think the fact that the support and the amount of effort that they've put in, in terms of sending the emails and responding to all of the, sending out letters and phoning in, to me, I mean, I'm not opposed to voting now, especially where the, the support was, the decision by the community was overwhelming. And then from there, modifying the plan as we need to, but at least starting as of August 10th.
Pete, if I may, and Mike, I felt the same way you coming into the meeting. I was ready to vote the hybrid orange and what Ryan has said and I think we do need to give the administration specific guidance as best we can, as soon as we can. And so one of the things I guess I'd like to see is if between tonight and next Monday, you know, the results of Bill negotiating with, with, with the S T A and getting their, you know, official position with as much information as possible with them. So while I was prepared to vote the presented plan tonight, in, in understanding Ryan's concern, I mean, I could wait another week until next Monday to see what pans out with D E S I and, and the union. But I'm not opposed to voting it tonight either, Mike.
Well, so I had a, I got kicked out of Zoom too on back though. I think that, you know, I anticipate this might, that this might be the complexity to our meeting tonight. I don't, and I'm not going to bargain in, in public, obviously, but I'm not sure how any of the unions can negotiate when we don't know what, they don't know what the plan is. So I'm at a crossroads here. I feel like same way I was prepared to support the hybrid version, but that was based upon no strict metric in terms of what our infection or transmission rate is. But I guess I'll have to take the recommendation of Superintendent Burkhead and the committee in terms of how we want to vote, potentially move the needle or change directions come next Monday.
Chairman Gates, my name. Comment?
Yes, please.
I think we've heard from thousands of people. We've heard from 90 minutes worth of comment tonight. My recommendation is that we vote on the plan with the understanding that next week, we vote on the, which plan we're going to start with regardless of a metric or not. It gives you all time to kind of digest things and think about it. Things aren't going to change that drastically and we can get, we can continue our, our planning. It won't be sidetracked by a week. As long as we have the, the plan approved, we can move forward with our work.
Is it reasonable to assume that we need to move forward with both plans anyway? I mean, they'll probably both be needed at some point during the next stretch of time. So it's not work or not, is what I'm trying to say. Like I don't want anybody to have to do anything and then say, oh, well, that was great, but we don't need it now.
Right, absolutely. We've been working on all three plans all along and we'll continue to do that.
And I think regardless of how we, if we vote tonight or not, the teachers have to plan for remote and hybrid. I mean, that you can't, you can't plan for just one because whatever we vote tonight in a month could be, that, that could be taken out of our hands depending on what happens with numbers. So I think realistically, it doesn't matter if we vote tonight or next week. The planning needs to happen and either way, it will happen simultaneously, I would imagine. Because we could, we could say, yeah, we're going to start September 16th remote, but then things improve and it goes hybrid, or it could go the other way. And it could change right up until a few days before school starts. We don't know.
And as Bill had said earlier tonight, I mean, if we vote to go hybrid, you know, everyone's unnoticed, it's time to ramp it up and get ready, you know? And I think there's a lot of, of good in that as well.
Okay, at this point, I would entertain a motion.
Well, for the purpose of making a motion, I will make a motion that the school committee approve our 20 20 reopening plan as presented and that we begin with phase orange, our hybrid learning model.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion by Hayes, second by Long. Need to do a roll call vote. How shall I do it? Hayes?
Yes.
Long?
Yep.
Randalini?
Yes.
Limblom?
No.
Gates, yes. Motion passes four to one.
That's that.
That's that. Okay, moving on the agenda. Subcommittee updates. Anything with the policy subcommittee? I know that with these new learning plans or with this new style of learning, we need to review our policies. Anything there? For Mr. Burkhead?
I think we'll be sending out, I think Kim will be sending out some invitations to members on that subcommittee to start looking at our policies now that we have a, a plan to see how that will impact various policies that we currently have. So I think unless that hasn't already gone out, that will go out this week.
Okay. No correspondence?
Did you skip over the new business?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Long. New business, the M O U for the Situate Teach Association, Mr. Burkhead. Thank you, Mr. Long, for correcting me there.
So we're, we're looking for a vote for a memorandum of understanding to basically waive a the date for retirement for our staff, for any of those members that are maybe interested in doing so. So that they may retire if they would like the, in excess their sick leave by back. It would have till August 15th to make that decision.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Hayes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Limblom. Randalini?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, we did, sorry, we did item six already. Subcommittee, there are no updates at this time. No correspondence, no warrants, any other business.
Next meeting?
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have scheduled a meeting for next Monday, 6:00 PM. That's August 17th. And then we would have one the following Monday, which would be August 24th. We have handbooks will be on that agenda, will be on probably the August 24th agenda. We still need to define the 2021 meeting schedule, but as of now, we're looking at probably weekly meetings for quite some time. Are there any other questions or comments, the school committee this time? All right, I would take a motion to adjourn at 8:27.
So moved.
Motion by Hayes, second by Long. I'll go with Gates, yes. Limblom?
Yes.
Long?
Yep.
Hayes?
Yes.
Randalini?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks, Bill.